Committee and Building and Planning Committee. So we will first start with the Police Committee and recognize Co-Chair Commissioner Zella.
Thank you very much, President Bernheim. For tonight's Police Committee, we'll start with the Committee's consideration that we authorize a police promotion. For that, I'll call on our Superintendent Mike McGrath. Superintendent?
Thank you. You know, in June, we promoted two officers to the rank of Sergeant. Since that time, one additional officer has left us a Sergeant when he was hired as Chief Police in Brookhaven, Delaware County. This evening, I'm making the recommendation that we promote from our current civil service list Officer John Kuwicke to the rank of Sergeant. I'll give you a brief summary of Officer Kuwicke's service to the community. He joined our department in 2006. He was initially assigned to Patrol Division. He was a field training officer and a platoon investigator while in patrol. In November of 2016, he was assigned to the detective unit. He's been the recipient of two commendations and four letters of appreciation from the community, and has been nominated numerous times for Officer Quarter and Officer of the Year. He was named Officer of the Quarter in the third quarter of 2013. During his assignments to the investigation unit, he has shown that he's very detail-oriented, extremely reliable, and it takes time to provide training in criminal investigations to his fellow officers. He has demonstrated all the skills and abilities we're looking for for a supervisor, and I ask that you authorize his promotion.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do any members of the committee have any questions or comments for our Superintendent on his recommendation for a promotion to the rank of Sergeant? Seeing none, I'll move that the Police Committee recommend to the Board of Commissioners that we promote Officer John Kuwicke to the rank of Sergeant in the Lower Marion Police Department. Motion's been seconded by Commissioner McComb. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed so indicate. Any abstentions? Madam Secretary, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Superintendent, now Sergeant John Kuwicke is eminently qualified. Thank you very much for providing his background and congratulations to Sergeant Kuwicke. Now, I believe you have a presentation you'd like to make.
Just have a few announcements, yes. I'll share the screen now. So the, along with Lower Marion Community Watch, we will be presenting a dog walker watch training session on Sunday, October 24 at 1:00 p.m. in the Common Area in Suburban Square. Dog Walker Watch helps to train dog walkers how to become more effective observers while walking their dog. It's actually a program that started here in Lower Marion Township, again, in cooperation with National Town Watch, and it's been very successful and has spread across the country. More information will follow from Community Watch and National Town Watch. Trained, well-mannered dogs are well. They did emphasize well-mannered. Coming up next week, we will be going through an accreditation certification renewal. The PLEA, which is the International Accreditation Agency that evaluates police departments, was formed by four organizations back in 1979, and those organizations include the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, Police Executive Research Forum, and the National Services Association. Accreditation looks to do many things, but it wants, particularly wants to promote sound operational decisions, establish supportive personnel practices, foster community awareness, and creates organizational transparency, among many things. Accreditation is for four years. Each year, each agency under accreditation must submit annual reports to show continued compliance to the standards which initially justify the accreditation. Lower Marion Police Department must comply with 189 standards in order to maintain our accreditation status. And this is the third time we've been going through the international accreditation. We've been through the state accreditation at least six times. The team will be here virtually due to the circumstances with COVID on Monday, starting Monday, October 4th, and continuing until October 5th. There is a public information session on the 4th at 6:00 p.m., and again, that will be conducted virtually. If anybody would like to participate, they can contact Officer Madeline Lewis. Number is posted on the screen and for viewers, and we've posted on the website, and they can call in to discuss the accreditation process. Additionally, the public may call in a second time to the excesses themselves, and that will occur on Tuesday, October 5th, between the hours of 1:00 and 3:00 p.m. Again, the number is posted and will be posted on the website for anybody who would like to participate. The, and then there's the third option. People can always write to the Commission on Accreditation PLEA. The address again is posted on your screen here, and we've provided to the public, and they will accept, obviously, any communication at any time. Also like to point out that there is a police entry-level test, which you recently approved, and that will occur on October 23rd of this year. Applications are available online. It had been posted that they would be ending this week, but we are extending the application deadline until October the 12th. And that ends the announcement.
Thank you very much, Superintendent, particularly for the information on the accreditation process and the hiring window, because the opportunity to become a Lower Marion Police Officer only occurs at certain periods of time when we open the hiring window, and then, once that window closes, there's an extensive testing process in which we create then a list of qualified applicants, and we hire them as we determine our needs to have openings. And so you're saying that the window to provide your, or submit your application to be considered for the Lower Marion Police Department closes on October 12th?
That is correct.
And the fact that that deadline's been extended, will that be publicized?
It will be.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments for our Superintendent? Do any members of the public have any questions or comments for our Superintendent? Seeing none, thank you very much, Superintendent, for your report and for the report on the police promotion. President Bernheim, that concludes the business of the Police Committee for this evening.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Zella. Thank you, Superintendent, and congratulations to Officer, now Sergeant, Kuwicke. That brings us to our next committee meeting, which is Building and Planning, and we'll recognize Co-Chair Commissioner Sinai.
Thank you, President Bernheim. We have one item on our agenda tonight, and that is appointments to the zoning hearing board. So I will move that we, excuse me, recommend to the Board of Commissioners the retroactive reappointment of Michael Tashman-Robins to the zoning hearing board for a three-year term to expire January 2024, and the appointment of Alan Ritterband effective October 1st, 2021, from an alternate to a member for a three-year term, such term to expire October 2024. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any Commissioner comment?
Go ahead, sir.
Commissioner Zella?
Thank you, Commissioner Sinai. I would note that this continues the, and is consistent with our prior approach of appointing from the most senior of the alternates to become a full-time member of the zoning hearing board when such an opening exists. The zoning hearing board is somewhat unusual in that it has two alternates that only serve when there is a need. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners Zella. Any other Commissioners wish to comment? President Bernheim?
Yeah, thank you very much. This is doing part to the fact that Charlie Davidson, who served on the board for approximately 12 years, has elected to step down, and we would have him here this evening to try to our very best to thank him for his spectacular service to our community, but he happens to be out of the country for three months. I think he's residing in Israel with his wife, who's got some event going on there. But when he comes back, we will try our very best to say thank you to him, and we appreciate Michael stepping in.
Thank you, President Bernheim. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Grimes?
Yeah, thank you. I was gonna wait till after the vote to make sure we replaced Charlie Davidson, but let me just add to the very astute comments of President Bernheim. Charlie Davidson, actually, according to our website, served for 14 years on a, on a board, as I think many of you may know, some may not, is the, I think, our only board that has independent decision-making authority, and that places a lot of responsibility on the board. It is not an easy, the zoning code is not easy to decipher for anybody, including the members of the zoning board, and Charlie, as the other members, do also serve, clearly served with distinction as Co-Chair of the zoning hearing board for the last few years, again, with many routine decisions, but many tough decisions that required a lot of time, effort, and education, so we thank him for that. I also want to thank Michael Tashman-Robins for being willing to continue serving on this board and for, congratulate Alan Ritterband after six and a half years of being an alternate for stepping up as a regular member. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. That was, that was extremely well said. This, this board did a tremendous amount of work. I think we are grateful to everyone, including some people on this board who have served in this role. Any public comment? And seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? And it passes unanimously. Mr. President, that concludes the business of Building and Planning for this evening.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Sinai, and, you know, I, I would like to say that the Phillies are beating the Braves 7-0, but that's not yet true. So with that, we will then call to order our Board of Commissioners meeting, and first thing I'll ask you, if you'll all be so kind to rise for the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic of West Virginia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, you'd be so kind as to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Churchill has asked to be excused. Mr. Courtney?
Present.
Ms. Durbin?
Here.
Mr. Gavron?
Present.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. McComb?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Present.
Ms. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Sinai?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Present.
Mr. Whalen?
Here.
Mr. Zella?
Here.
Mr. Bernheim?
Present.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to our first order of business, and that is to approve minutes of a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on July 7, and stated meeting of the Board held on July 21 and August 2 as distributed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Vice President Gavron. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand indicating your approval. The minutes are so approved. For next, a couple of very brief announcements, if I may. The Board did meet in executive session prior to this evening and received information from our professional staff regarding some litigation matters, some personnel matters, the Lower Marion School District, an update report on the coronavirus, and 1,400 mil free growth. I'd also like to make note that the annual Go for the Green Award will be held on Thursday, September 30th at 6:30 p.m. in Zoom, the online platform. I believe that information is available from the township website. Also, a favorite of many, Cleanup Weekend is being held on Saturday, October 9, and Sunday, October 10, from 9:00 to 4:00 each day at the Township Public Work Complex. Residents may dispose of their refuse and recycling free of charge. You do need to have proof of residency, and recycling must be separated from the refuse. No hazardous waste will be accepted. Also, there is a proclamation, which is in reference to Fire Prevention Week, and its caption, "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety." If you would permit me to read this. Whereas the Township of Lower Marion is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke before weekend, alerting us to danger in the event of a fire, in which we may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of injury in a home fire in half, therefore, we should be sure everyone in our homes understands bounds of alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas planning and practicing a home fire escape plan ensures that we are more prepared and therefore more likely to survive a fire in our home, and whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety," effectively serves to remind us to recognize the sounds of smoke detectors and respond accordingly. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Lower Marion does hereby proclaim October 3 to 9, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week, and urges all residents to learn the sounds of fire safety and to support the efforts of the Township's Fire Emergency Service during Fire Prevention Week 2021. I will note that merely having October 3 to October 9 as Fire Prevention Week seems a little bit off. Every week should be Fire Prevention Week, but this is a special proclamation just to bring this to our attention. That brings us to the next section of our meeting, which is what's referred to as public privilege of the floor. This is where members of the public may address the Board on non-agenda items and any other public matters which fall within the jurisdiction of township. I don't believe, and Jody, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have anybody online for public privilege?
One person. Oh, they just, oh, here we go. Yep, hang on one second. We have Jackie Shapiro.
Jackie, if you can turn on your camera. Jackie, you with us?
I got it.
Thank you. If you'd be so kind as to introduce yourself, and the floor is yours.
Absolutely. My name's Jackie Shapiro. I've been in the township for 20 years, and I've been an avid pickleball player now for 20 years, sorry, two years. Avid, not necessarily the most proficient. There were courts that were supposed to be created and were funded, really, at the onset of COVID, so obviously that did not happen. However, at this point, we had assurances from Parks and Rec that it would happen by the end of summer. There were overlays done on some of the courts, which is great, but really doesn't speak to what pickleball is, which is very much of a round-robin sport. There's many, many Lower Marion residents going to the courts in Haver Town, their Paddock Park, where there's eight lovely courts, and in a given session on a Saturday morning, you'll see over 50 people participating in a round-robin style, while you'll kind of look at the five tennis courts and notice they're usually empty. So it's really becoming a huge sport, and particularly in COVID, it's been an outlet, been a healthy outlet, it's been a social outlet, and many of us played through the winter last year and can plan to do the exact same thing. So the biggest problem is that no progress seems to have happened on these courts that were promised many times, including by the end of the summer. They were planned for Balla, and I always forget the name of the, the park on Remington.
Winwood Valley.
Thank you so much. They were promised to be in those two places, which I might add are probably not the most ideal locations, hence why they were chosen. For many reasons, they're not ideal locations, but we'd be happy to have some dedicated pickleball courts and a number of them, so that you can have these large groups come and play these round-robin games that really meet the needs of so-so many. And we're just wondering, many people who I know from Lower Marion, I'd say on any given day, about half of the people playing at Paddock Park are from Lower Marion, wondering what the status is and how we can get updates on the status and be assured that this actually will come to fruition.
Thank you very much. We'll get you a response, but let me first see if there's anybody else who wishes to bring up any topics under the time for public privilege. All right, please come up into the podium here, introduce yourself. Commissioner Shapiro, don't go away, because we are going to give you a response to your, your inquiry.
Hi there. My name's Rebecca Cronin. I live on Sibley Ave in Ardmore. I know it's hard to tell with the mask, but some of you may recognize me. I have stood before you before in the development of Cambridge Square that's on my street, as well as the square, and I plan to be here in a few more weeks when we talk about the new suburban square a lot. The problem with Sibley Ave--
Rebecca, can you get closer to a microphone? We're having a little bit of difficulty hearing you, and in the world of masks, it's always hard. Yes, yes, thank you.
The problem with Sibley Ave is that it's that tiny little street that takes you down to the farmer's market. For those of you who don't live in Ardmore, it's become very congested over the years as we've had two major apartments and condominiums built on our small little street with residents and two major businesses, Heinz Roofing and also the Infinity Service Department. On any given day on my street, I can't get down, I can't get in my driveway. I petitioned you back in 2017. You very kindly allowed the parking to be changed to two-hour league, and you did put a no parking sign next to my driveway so I could enter, because there is a small spot makes it difficult for me to get in and out. That was after a car accident I had trying to get out of my own driveway. Enforcement during COVID went away, and it hasn't returned. Enforcement means that the employees of the Infinity dealership stop parking on the street for 10 hours a day. Enforcement means that the Heinz trucks don't park on both sides of the road, even though there's only one side of the road parking, and it means that all those service vehicles and all of those moving vans can park in the right places, and I can freely access my driveway, as well as Narberth ambulance can safely enter the street to get into their building. It's nonstop. This is not the first time I'm here. This is what happens when we put in big buildings. We need to address this concern. The square has added their own loading zone in front of their building. I stood here and petitioned with Chris Laswick back when the square was built to have an appropriate loading zone placed in a very safe place past Narberth ambulance's entrance. We came out with a township fire truck and deemed that it was not possible to pass down my street when there is a vehicle, a moving van, emptying or loading, and a fire truck needs to get by because there's parking on the right-hand side. And in July 2020, the square, in the middle of the night, 5:30 in the morning to be exact, painted their own loading zone. I've called the township multiple times, I've emailed the township, and no one has done anything, and this makes for a huge safety issue on my road. As we move forward to the suburban square development and planning, I really urge you, there's only a few members of this board that live in Ardmore, I really urge you to drive down my street, take a look, because the new building's at the end of my street. Something needs to be done. I ask that there be some ordinances on parking and towing and enforcement. Thank you, and I want to give a special thanks to Ray Courtney, because he has been helpful and hopefully distributed some pictures that I've sent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, we'll get a response. Is there anybody else who would like to take this opportunity to address the Board under public privilege, please?
Is this good? Okay.
Just speak up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Hufford. I'm a member of the, of the group that, I believe, spoke before the Commission at the July 21st meeting. I wasn't able to be here, and I'm, I'm here tonight to help keep this issue before you, and the issue I'm talking about is gasoline power, gasoline-powered leaf blowers. There, there are compelling reasons to ban gasoline-powered leaf blowers. I believe that the hazards to human health and environment described in a growing body of research offer sufficient grounds for a ban, and I know that my fellow citizens have brought these hazards to your attention with specificity. What I would like to address here tonight are impacts on quality of life and aesthetic values in our community. When my husband and I moved here with our children nearly 20 years ago, I threw myself into gardening and to cherishing the right to what property law refers to as the quiet enjoyment of our premises. Sometime within the past 15 years, our peaceful sound scape became increasingly dominated by the buzz, rumble, and roar of industrial-strength landscape machinery for hours each day of the week. When it is operating next door, I cannot have a conversation on my porch. Several years ago, while standing on my porch, I recorded a decibel level of 94 produced by leaf blowers next door. On reporting this to the Township Police, I learned that our noise ordinance exempts landscape equipment from decibel restrictions between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Why have a noise ordinance that explicitly exempts violators? As happened with smoking tobacco products, transitioning away from fossil-fuel-powered machinery entails a massive cultural shift. I understand that gasoline-powered machines maintain a look that many of my neighbors value, but please consider that the militarized scale of fossil-fuel-powered lawn machinery is massively out of sync with the quiet enjoyment of one's present premises. With gasoline-powered leaf blowers, cleaner, greener living is illusory. Leaf blowers do not vacuum, they blow. Their secondhand smoke consists of 200 mile-per-hour winds that stir up and redistribute a toxic brew of particulate and microbial matter, fecal waste from animals, residue from pesticides and herbicides, seeds from invasive weeds and more, spreading through clouds of dust and debris rising many feet into the air, attended by the strong smell of gasoline that is mixed with oil to power the blowers. To mitigate the hardship that a ban on landscapers' livelihoods would impose, I propose that a ban be accompanied by tax incentives for companies that switch to rakes, brooms, and battery-powered equipment, and for the homeowners who patronize them. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment and for your continuing attention to, to this issue.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to take the opportunity for public privilege? Please come forward. And I should have noted at the outset, we generally have a three-minute rule, not that we're real strict about it, and if somebody has already talked about a topic, you know, always not necessary to repeat the same thing, but nevertheless, please introduce yourself and address the board.
Isabel Melvin. I'm at 755 Periwinkle in Winwood. Good evening, President Bernheim and Board of Commissioners. Thank you again to you and the Township staff, Jody Kelly, for all you do for our township. On July 21st, 2021, COM, Clive Mint Action, Lower Marion, presented a petition to the Board requesting a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Members of COM and the group, the social media group NOISE, which is a next-door group, and Indian Creek-- and Indian Creek neighbors would like to know the status of this proposal and would love to participate in its happening. I just want to remind you of one of the images in our petition. According to the California Air Resource Board, operating a gas-powered leaf blower for one hour is the equivalent of driving 1,100 miles. So that would be like Denver, Colorado to Los Angeles, California. A simple thing that we can all do now to reduce the harmful effects of gas-powered leaf blowers is ask our lawn care professional to stop using them. That's the first thing we can do. Everyone can do this. I did it and my lawn looks fine. In addition, next time you hear gas-powered leaf blowers, I know you probably want to run away, but try to observe how the operators, try to observe the operators' actions. It will help you understand and see for yourself how inefficient they are. And they create havoc not only on our ears and mental health, but our environment at large. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And once again, anybody else who wishes to speak at public privilege?
We have one gentleman on Zoom, Timothy Thompson Hall.
Hello, can I speak now?
Yes, please go ahead and introduce yourself and address the board.
Okay, my name is Reverend Timothy Thompson Hall. As you can see by my name, I am the pastor of the Ardmore United Methodist Church, but I'm also a resident of Lower Marion. I live at 755 Parkview Drive, Winwood, PA. And so you may have already covered this. I just got on. I'm sorry, I'm running a little late, but but I guess I'm asking whether the commissioners could work with the Parks and Rec Department to create some dedicated pickleball courts. We want to do a, some like tournaments and other kind of sponsored events by the church to create physical activity, but also social interaction for our congregants, but also the community. And so I think that some of the tennis courts have recently got lined, but no action on dedicated courts. And that's kind of disappointing since it's been several years since we've kind of asked. And I tried to contact my commissioner, who I think is Mr. Whalen, but he hasn't responded to either call or email. So I just thought I'd come onto the meeting and see if we could nudge the commissioners to do something because it's like a premier township and it seems way behind in terms of our pickleball court situation compared to Radnor and Havreford. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Once again, anybody else who would like to take the opportunity for public privilege? I'd seen none. First turn to any members of the board who would like to respond to any of the comments. We'll start all the way down Commissioner Courtney and work our way up.
Thank you, President Bernheim. I'll let the colleagues to my left address the leaf blower, which is an issue I care about. They have been to the meetings that I have not been able to attend, so they will be better first. I'd like to start by thanking Ms. Cronin for raising the issues regarding the parking on Sibley Ave. And it's quite timely, given that the proposed apartment building at Suburban Square is coming back before the Planning Commission next month. By my count, this year we've approved preliminary plans for roughly 700 new apartments. And we will review and I suspect approve the 130 units in the suburban square preliminary plant. Since we have a zoning code that allows this influx of development and density, it behooves us, I gotta get rid of this, to address the infrastructure impacts as well. And in my opinion, we're falling behind. Here is yet another example, and a frustrating one. It reset. It's gonna keep going. And it's a frustrating example because you don't need to park illegally in suburban square. There's ample parking in the parking garage. But yet still, we find it happening on the nearest residential street, a street that, as Ms. Cronin mentioned, houses Narberth ambulance. Captain Thomas, in response to my asking about this particular street, pointed out, you all saw this in our email from Mr. McNeely today. In the past year, we've issued 194 parking tickets on that street, 194, 12 months. And I find that sort of ironic because when I asked about enforcement, our township manager says in most cases violations of a no parking zone are adequately addressed with ticketing. And I would say, in this instance at least, it is not adequate. Clearly, 194 tickets is not making a difference. And in our budget workshop, we heard about issues with our booting and towing ordinance that we are unable to enforce that. We are unable to tow cars away for simple parking violations. I think if we are going to continue to densify our downtowns, then we need to adopt stricter policies around enforcement. And if our towing ordinance is not sufficient to handle these parking violations, then that's something we need to correct. Towing may be expensive and time-consuming, as our township manager suggested, and that's a cost that we can pass on to the violator. At present, we are too slow to address legislative problems like this. And we need to shift our priorities from one-off solutions and individual land development to meaningful improvements that will have an impact township. Thank you, President Bernheim.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Courtney. And the point well made that I believe, as you know, and hope these folks will understand, is certainly on our radar to try to improve. Commissioner Sinai.
Thank you, President Bernheim. And I'll follow Commissioner Courtney's lead in deferring the parking to him, though I share his view on it. And instead talked about leaf blowers. And unfortunately, President Bernheim is going this way down the down the desk here because really Commissioner O'Neill should speak on this for me. But I'm here in sequence. So let me just say, thank you to people who spoke about gasoline-powered leaf blowers. There are a number of people on this board who share your concern. I think we are working diligently on it. The movement to investigate an issue and turn it into policy is not something that happens in a month or two. To rest assured that it's something that a large number of people here feel is very important. And you may ask then, well, what to do in the meantime? And I think Ms. Melvin, who had some great comments both in July and now, really had some good advice, which is, you know, here on the board, the discussion would be your regulations on the, perhaps on the supply side, like what is it that landscape companies can do or what kind of equipment can people use? You don't need us to demand change on the demand side. As Ms. Melvin said, you can go to your landscape professionals and say, look, what we want is you to use electric-powered equipment because we don't want gasoline-powered equipment on our yard. We don't want teams of five people running noisy leaf blowers at 80 decibels each, times five, moving down the yard in tandem and creating a large bunch of noise. We don't want that. We don't want the two-stroke engines, including our environment. We perhaps don't want the environmental impacts from blowing at all. Right? And let them tell you what it would take for them to do that, because I think what we have heard from these, from landscapers, is that if there was a demand for it, they'd serve it. All right. And we need to ask. But that's the temporary solution. I think, you know, I hope this board will do what is being asked here, which is come up with a creative solution to address this, because I think our future does not involve gasoline-powered landscaping equipment. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Commissioner Sinai. That actually sums up nicely on the on the noise side of leaf blowers. So I'd like to go ahead and I'm going to turn and address the pickleball actually. An ambassador reached out to me last week. And we met with our Parks and Rec Director on an update on where things stand, both in terms of the location of the new paintings and also nets, et cetera. So, and I can give you a very quick update. For one, we are looking into purchasing specific nets and the net boxes that would be held very close to the existing tennis courts, which have been converted or have been relined for pickleball. And we are getting quotes on that. The second thing is we're trying to identify new, either brand-new courts rather than conversion of courts. And that, you know, we know will be about $80,000 for tennis court convert to for pickleball court. So this is very much on radar. And we're just trying to work through the logistics of share play. Lower Marion and Harrington tennis teams rely heavily on existing tennis courts. So the question is, how do we engage other users and the growing pickleball ambassadors and players to really take this to the next level? But it is on radar. We will be proposing some changes to the CIP for '21 to help to fund some new pickleball courts. But I will work with our Parks and Rec Director to keep everybody informed along those lines. And Commissioner McNeely, sorry, Manager McNeely, you may actually have other pertinent information too to share.
Commissioner, I would just add that the two, Winwood Valley and Bala, are scheduled, funded this year and are scheduled. They're awaiting materials and the contractor to get going.
And also just to shout out quickly to our fellow commissioner from Penn, from Shortridge. Commissioner Whalen has been so responsive on pickleball issues, at least so far as we go. So I just wanted to shout out to you for being, you know, a great communicator and everything that you and I have talked about vis-à-vis pickleball has always been supportive of the growing need there. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Zelloff, a pickleball player himself.
Three commissioners, three important topics. I will, I support generally what's been said so far. I will just add with regard to the noise from landscaping equipment. As we heard from Commissioner Sinai, the process is underway and takes a while, but we're already getting input from landscaping companies. And the demand side is, as he pointed out, it can make a difference, but we should not assume that everybody hires a landscaper. So if you cut your own grass and you rake your own leaves, next time you upgrade or replace by battery-powered and use a rake, buy a rake. And because at my house, we do that. And so the leaf blower is going to be replaced by a battery-powered leaf blower soon. So, you know, that's in many lawns in this township where the homeowner does work.
You should not hesitate to call Commissioner Zelloff. You need someone to rake your lawn. Yes, anybody, Commissioner Grimes.
I know who to go for helper.
These masks actually help. You don't see the grins. Commissioner Grimes, please.
Thank you. I just want to comment on one thing. And first of all, let me thank the residents who commented on the parking issue. And also I want to particularly thank Ms. Shapiro for participating tonight. Let me just talk about parking. You've raised a very valid issue, but I want to just let anyone else who was watching, who might be saying, well, I have this problem too in other parts of the township, to know that we hear you. Several commissioners have been working for months on other areas, on Ardmore's picker area and suburban square, but also in other parts of the township that are less populated with parking issues and illegal parking in our parks and by schools. And this is an ongoing process. And there are several of us, if not all of us, who are dedicated to helping resolve that issue. So thank you. I just wanted to put that out.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to make two points. One, about the leaf blowers. I think that's a good idea that we do have this discussion. I just hope that keep in mind that we do a progression type of change, because a lot of in a lot of townships and other areas that have made changes around leaf blowers, it had economic impact on some of the folks who were hired and working on that. And so we make sure we have a plan to make a transition in there, but I support it 100%. As far as the parking, I'm just going to go to the simple piece of this. And everybody knows where I'm going to go on this. We cannot talk about parking without talking about development. And if you want to talk about development, then stop this overdevelopment. And it is ridiculous that we continuously have these conversations that we're going to do something, do something. But we have this overdevelopment and we don't have a plan to accompany it about pedestrians, about parking, about traffic. And we keep saying that we do a study and it's fine. Well, at some point, you know, I'm not that bright, but keep adding apartments, you keep adding cars, keep adding people. Something that, all right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to respond in connection with public privilege? Okay, that brings us to the next section of our meeting, which is public comment. And this is the opportunity to address the board on agenda items. And I will point out, if anyone wishes to discuss 39 Fairview Road, now would be the time to do that. And I will, at this time on the front end, note that we try to limit items to three minutes. So is there anybody who wishes to take opportunity, please come to the podium?
Hi, my name's Barbara Erskine. I live in Pennsylvania Avenue. Can you hear me? As a follow-up to Commissioner Sinai's comment at the last meeting in regard to the new apartment building in Bryn Mawr. I've watched a lot of construction around the hospital over the past 10 years, and I've noticed how certain street trees thrive and others die. In particular, I've watched the sycamores on the verge near the pedestrian crosswalk on Bryn Mawr Avenue across from the hospital. When the office building 135 was built, they were growing well and they were healthy. And they remained that way throughout the construction process. However, after that, they suffered from various kinds of abuse, from a load of stones being dropped on them to huge amounts of ice melting products being used on the sidewalk, as well as being walked on, subject to volcano mulch and used by dogs in the usual way. The result is that two really nice street trees that were probably 15 to 20 years old are now stone dead and others there are on the way. In contrast, the trees planted around the office building at 825 Old Lancaster on the corner of Summit Grove are for the most part alive and well. The difference is that these trees have a six-foot square area around them fenced with low black iron fencing and contained underplanted with liriope. I'm sure there are cons associated with these little fences, but I'd like to list the pros. Practically speaking, the delicate flare area at the base of the tree is not beaten down by pedestrians or subjected to volcano mulching. The planted area keeps the soil from being compacted and thus rain permeates the soil much more easily. Dogs are kept away from the base of the tree and snow and salt is not piled up around the tree. Aesthetically, in the very wide sidewalk, it's roughly 16 feet there from the building to the curb, these small green areas along the partially brick sidewalk provide year-round relief from a vast expanse of hardscape, softening the experience and imparting a bit of a village experience. If you've walked along the sidewalk at the new Aqua Edition, you would see what I mean. The hard stucco wall comes down directly to a very wide cement sidewalk. There are no trees, nothing green, as you walk along between the entrance and Starbucks, except the landscape which is inside the parking lot walled off from the sidewalk. It's hot in the summer and bleak in the winter. More importantly, to circle back to the commissioner's thought last week, putting in a larger caliper tree, even in the specified good soil, does not guarantee that that tree will live. A smaller caliper tree in a good environment will quickly outpace a larger tree suffering abuse. And if you have to keep replacing dead trees, they'll never be large enough to provide a canopy. Preventing abuse is much easier than correcting it with yet another tiny tree, as the dead sycamores will show. I feel that the relatively small investment in the small fenced areas would prove to be well worth the return in the long run. And I respectfully ask that you consider this as a part of the approval of 2610 Bryn Mawr Avenue.
Thank you very much. Saved by the bell. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board during public comment? All right. Is there anybody from the board who would like to respond to that, which was just so articulately presented to us? I think we- I think we had, just go ahead, Commissioner Zell.
Thanks, President Bernheim. And I want to thank Barbara Erskine for her comments. Because, as you said, smaller caliper trees in the right environment do better than large caliper trees in a poor environment. We do have new standards for planting of street trees that have recently been incorporated. I'm looking at our director of building and planning, incorporated into our code and our conditions of approval. One or the other, or both. And the street, for some of the street trees you've cited, I know that you contacted Bryn Mawr Hospital and they responded today, today that they've hired a new landscaping company. And that's, they needed to do so. President Bernheim, could we ask our building and planning director to respond specifically on street trees? Would you accommodate that?
Well, it'd be hard for me to say no now. Be so kind.
Evening. Commissioners Zelloff, you are absolutely correct when we're talking about the Bryn Mawr development. In recent developments in some of these mixed-use projects, staff has been working with the Shade Tree Commission. Shade Tree Commission has been providing very good input on the tree planting pits where these trees are going. Address many of the comments that were just raised here tonight. A healthy tree pit that has a larger area, a root area with better soil in it will actually support trees better than traditional planting pit. So this is one of the things that we've included, this is a matter of practice, it's somewhat in a condition, it's somewhat in our plan review. The new saldo that's coming forward before the, before the public incorporates a lot of these tree planting elements as well to really improve the sustainability. One thing that we've become aware of from our advisory body, that it's tough being a tree in the township. It's, there's an awful lot of salt. We're very concerned about cars and cars moving. So our roads are over-salted in many ways. That salt has to go somewhere, winds up by the trees. Trying to give protection to trees and making wider tree pits, they're not run over by all the activity along the edge. We're looking at that as a design.
Thank you, Chris. And for those who wonder that the saldo is the subdivision and land development ordinance, which provides the rules under which land development occurs. Thank you very much, President Bernheim.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Zelloff. Anybody else who wishes to respond to public comment? Yes, Commissioner McComb.
Thank you, President Bernheim. I would like to thank Ms. Erskine as well for raising these issues. And those who, those of us who go to New York occasionally sort of marvel at the fact that trees in New York do so well, even though they're really horrendous condition. But again, it's soil volume, number one, and two, the enclosures do keep the salt out and keep the dogs out. I think it's a perfect idea and it's something I will bring to the attention of the Shade Tree Commission. I know they're aware of it, but I think urging all residences, all residents who plant or encourage the township to plant tree trees should be aware of that, use that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, any other further comment? Seeing none, that will close the, the section of our meeting, which brings us to the next section, which is our consent calendar. Normally, the request is to see if anybody from the board would like to remove anything from consent. But this time, I'm gonna add something with permission of those who voted contrary to the preliminary land development plan at one twenty-one East City Avenue, which is on page twenty-four of our agenda, to add that with their consent to our consent calendar. And then with that, I will move for the approval of the consent calendar as presented and just amended. And ask if, as well as the items from the earlier meeting this evening from the police and building and planning committees, and see if I can get a second. Yes, Commissioner Whalen, thank you very much. Any commoner questions on the consent calendar? So then, all those in favor of its approval, raise your hand indicating so. Believe that to be unanimous and I appreciate that. That then will bring us to the next section or agenda item for our meeting. And this is to consider, or this is for a public hearing and adoption of an ordinance after A one eighty Historic Resource Inventory at five thirty-three Mason Place Bryn Mawr. Before we begin, however, I think Commissioner Zelloff, you wish to address this?
Thank you, President Bernheim. There are many issues with this, this application. But I would like to move its continuance, which has been requested by the property owner, to January nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. But also note that I, since we have continued this previously, I think this is the last continuance that makes sense for us to consider.
Think that those are two valid points. One, acknowledging the request. And secondly, come January, then would be the time to make, make a decision. So I will second that. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your hand indicating your approval. Any objection to that? Seeing none, it is therefore carried to January. That then brings us to our, our next public hearing, which would be on page thirty-three of your, your agenda. And this is for adoption of ordinance to amend the code of the township, Lower Marion, chapter A one eighty Historic Resource Inventory and to add thirty-nine Fairview to the Historic Resource Inventory as a class-two resource. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners on February twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one, and duly advertised in July four, two thousand and twenty-one, in July eleven, two thousand and twenty-one additions, the mainline times in suburban. This public hearing was continued at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners on July twenty-one. And we will now proceed with this and, and open the hearing. And I see we have a couple of members from our Building and Planning Department who's gonna be taking the lead here.
I can just give a quick introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Lessin.
This application, we actually have two members of staff that you heard tonight to talk about adding a property to the historic inventory. Greg Pritchard is gonna go through the analysis and recommendation of the historical commission to add this property as a class-two resource. But I think it's important, I'll be coming in later in the presentation to provide some additional background to round out this application. So the board has a full understanding of what's before. But with this, I just wanted to lead it off with Greg, claiming the resource is often wise and recommended via.
Hey, thank you, Chris, and good evening, commissioners. I just have a couple of slides to run through for you. This is an aerial view showing the property outlined in blue, as well as its surroundings. It's a very kind of natural part of the township, part of Fairview Road in Penn Valley. And the natural features are a significant part of the, the character of this property, as well as the historic building. The historical commission recommended approval of the designation of this property based on three of the ten designation criteria. And that exceeds the number of criteria required for class-two designation. And so they recommended based on criteria one, seven, and eight. And I'm, we're going to go out of order a little bit, but we will address each one of these. Starting with number seven, which is embodies distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style, engineering technology, construction, or building method, or material fabrication technique. And really, this has to do with the overall, the architecture of the house. The very distinctive mid-century modern style that the architect employed to create this really wonderful home. It was designed to really meld with the surrounding landscape, with the wooded feel of the property. And in fact, it was designed around many of the existing large trees on the property. So it was really meant to, to blend in with its surroundings and complement them, rather than to clear-cut the lot and build a new modern house there. Now, there, there is precedent for designating mid-century properties on the Historic Resource Inventory. A lot of these are institutional properties. There are some residences as well, such as the Genell House in Wynwood. But this is really a, a style of architecture that is gaining new appreciation, both here in this township and nationwide, worldwide. And we, the commission was really glad to see such an important example of this style come before them. The second criteria, number eight, has to do with the architect itself. And the architect in this case was a man named Fedor Brandau, who designed this house in nineteen fifty-nine. We have the original plans here in the files of the Building and Planning Department. And Brandau was really known most for his large-scale tract housing. He could be credited with hundreds of house designs throughout the region and across the country. But this was a single, singular house that he designed. It was an opportunity for him to be creative, to create a unique, one-off building for this particular site. And finally, number one, has significant character, interest, or value as part of the heritage of the, the community in essence. And we, we studied this area, the surrounding properties here on Fairview Avenue, Fairview Road. And when they were built, who were, who they were designed by? And we identified this cluster here, outlined in red, of really significant mid-century buildings, buildings that, and homes that exhibit the, the characteristics of good mid-century modern architecture. And again, all of them take advantage of the wooded surroundings of this landscape and don't detract from it. They really complement it. And here are some examples of those houses. Some of them have been restored and expanded, but kept that kind of mid-century flavor and characteristic. And so Chris is going to speak a little bit about, more about the application in general.
When this application was originally proposed to the township, the applicant came forward to subdivide the property. And this is, this goes back before the old, this is actually under the old zoning. This, this is a year and a half, it's been kicking around through COVID and going forward, where the property owner wanted to maintain the house. It came into his possession, he wanted to maintain the house, but there was a lot of pressure to either tear this house down and put in a new contemporary house that would be much larger on the site, essentially clear-cut a lot of the woods, or to subdivide the property and create a flag lot. Staff's done a, a lot of analysis and I think it's the intention. I need to be clear to the board that's the intent of this property owner. If they are on, on the, if they're granted place on the inventory as a class-two resource, that they would proceed conditional use application to create a rear lot. By, in order to do that, they would need minor relief of the setback of the rear to allow the new house to go in behind this existing house, would be a much smaller house. Now, when we first looked at this, that, that didn't seem, it seemed like we were having a trade here to the, to the community of allowing historic preservation to create another house. Over time, with our staff analysis, we no longer look at it that way. We actually look at this, not as what would happen to the applicant, but what would happen to the town. In our analysis of this, as Greg has pointed out, staff has gone out and walked the site, driven the site, walked around the neighborhood. This is about neighborhood preservation as much as anything. In, in our estimation, as we've gone through the analysis, I'll take you through some of the similar analysis. Preserving the existing house with the existed wooded lot and allowing a small flag lot with a relatively small house behind it is consistent with the neighborhood pattern. That would be better overall for this neighborhood than to have this house torn down, the lot essentially cleared, and a large three-story contemporary house placed in its site. It would have a negative impact on the other modern houses and tree line character of this neighborhood. So we did a lot of analysis and in that, we identified the property that we have. And we, we went back by age and we looked at where some of the houses are and what the ages are. And we identified, once again, this cluster, but seeing that these houses are interrelated as a neighbor, function as a unit. And we did this by age and we found that these nineteen fifty's era's houses really represent a significant chunk of this neighborhood. It's not the house itself, it's relationship developed as a cluster, as a community. We also looked at this property in relationship to some of the other properties around it. And one of the, one of the things that you'll notice on this is that there is a series of, this area of Penn Valley has a lot of flag lots behind them. And what would be created here would be a flag lot. The flag lot that would be created, the applicant goes forward with his intent to subdivide the property, would be consistent to the property directly opposite, directly opposite there again. It's consistent with the neighborhood pattern. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan going forward. Here, once again, this is the, where it says five fifty-five Fairview. This is an existing flag lot and then there would essentially be a new flag lot created here, a smaller house. There's another flag lot back here. This area of Penn Valley has a series of. And this would show what the new flag lot potentially looked like. It would be much smaller, it would not be visible to the rest of the neighborhood. It would have to be a smaller house and would be in keeping with the neighborhood pattern. This is consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan. We're not trying to limit development, we're more concerned about preservation of the neighborhood. In this case, the additional development is consistent with that neighborhood pattern. The planet, the historical commission recommended this being added, understanding the whole package that's before the board. We, we believe that for the betterment of the neighborhood, allowing a flag lot, eventually a new flag lot to be created, up to the new zoning code, would have been able to be created. The relief that will be sought by, sought by the applicant is very much in keeping, it's within the fifteen percent that was permitted by the ordinance. But I thought it was in the board's, the board needed to know that, what you're getting into with. But one of the advantages, if this applicant comes forward with an eventual, not before tonight, but with an eventual conditional use application to allow the rear lot, the sod easement will be required on this property. And it will know, it'll be, it'll be a class-two, but it will have a permanent protection and not be able. So Greg and I are both here. I know that was a lot of information for you. We're happy to answer your questions. I believe the property owner is here also online if you needed to ask anything.
Tell you what we're gonna, thank you very much, Chris. What we're gonna do procedurally is to see if there are any comments from members of the public, including the property owner. That would then, in essence, close the hearing. We would then move for the adoption and allow members of the board to, at that point, you know, ask questions or make comments. So we'll, we'll first go, if there's anybody here present, you know, in the boardroom that wishes to make a comment or ask questions. All right, seeing none, now we'll go to Zoom world and we, Dodi.
No one is raising their virtual hands, so I would say we're, there is no comment.
Okay, fair enough. Then with that, we will then close the, the public hearing. And then I will move for the adoption of ordinance number forty-two twenty-four, in fashion previous to be read, and ask for a second on, on that motion. Thank you, Commissioner McComb. And then open this up to any members of the board who would have any questions or comments, Commissioner McComb, and then Commissioner Grimes.
Thank you, President Bernheim. Chris, just a quick question. I'm familiar with the area and this particular house slightly. The description is that the additional building in the back would be modest scale. I know we, nobody's got plans or anything, but can you give me an order of magnitude as to what staff's view of modest would be? And a very rough approximation.
Compared to, if we're familiar with this, with this particular neighborhood, I think we're aware that there's a number of, the pattern developed in the fifties are one, one and a half story houses. Many of the new homes are coming in two and a half stories, thirty, thirty-five feet. They're much higher, much bulkier than these other houses. Because this lot is smaller, the footprint, this new building must be smaller. In my estimation, it's a third to a half of the size of the distinct footprint of this existing.
Thanks, that's all. Thank you.
Very much. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Grimes.
Chris, two questions for you. You mentioned towards the end there that they're putting a facade easement. Would that or anything else prevent this, the old house, from being torn down after this approval granted?
Correct. So if the class-two designation is before you tonight, will not prevent demolition. That'll just require architectural review and the board will have a, the board could impose a ninety-day delay upon demolition. If an applicant, if the applicant goes forward with conditional use approval to create the rear lot, as a condition, in our code, requirement of that conditional use approval to take advantage of that incentive would require a facade easement. The facade easement will guarantee the permanent protection. The facade easement will guarantee the permanent protection of properties, therefore cannot be demolished without the board's.
Not approval of the Board of Commissioners?
Correct.
Okay. Was this property considered Class I designation?
I'll defer to our historic preservation consultant for that. That was not the application before the Historical Commission, only Class II designation was. So even though the Commission found that it met three criteria, which technically would be sufficient for Class I designation, they can, could only recommend Class II because that was the application before them.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Bernheim. I have some, I have some questions. But first, let me follow up on Commissioner Grimes' question. What is the practical difference between a Class II with a facade easement and a Class I?
The practical differences, differences, there is none. They essentially, the Board of Commissioners holds the authority to prohibit demolition. Both, both Class II with a facade easement and a Class I would need to go before our, either to harbor the HC for architectural review, but the board holds the cards regarding future demolition.
So with a Class I resource, I think there are some additions on, like what else you could do on the site, because there are things like used sheds that need to be maintained and stuff. Is that true with a Class II with a facade easement?
Correct. It is the same, same sort of evaluation.
Are all the other houses on Fairview that are mid-century that contribute to the neighborhood landscape, are they also being protected?
No, this is, this application is just for this. I'm not aware in our analysis that any of those are on the township's inventory. I think we would hope that going forward, this would make those, those neighbors aware of that, and they would also protect the property.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand, I mean, so one of the theses here is that this whole neighborhood works as fabric, and we're preserving like one thread of it. I'm trying to figure out what happens if all the others just here, then this becomes the norm.
And I think our strategy would be to encourage that preservation. I think in the absence of, of something maybe heavy-handed of imposing a district on here, I think what we, what we have seen is that you're creating that value by historic preservation. Over each, each property the township preserves creates that error that a new contemporary house somewhat looks out of place for all of those older houses. And I think by keeping that, I think it helps to preserve the character and makes people think twice about observing their own property.
Ideally, it would have some sort of neighborhood designation. But the, I understand why that's not before us tonight. So the new house that could conceivably be put in the flag lot back that is a smaller footprint, is it also the same height as the buildings around it, or can it actually go up to 35?
The new, the new home would be subject to the height limits of the zoning ordinance are higher than, are higher than that. The new home will need to get, will need to go before the Historical Commission for its impact upon the surrounding historic resource. But I don't, I think that the Historic Commission would try to push for a two, you know, two-story house as opposed to a three-story house in this spot, but there's no guarantee.
I see. And, and it does have any, any, you know, enforcement ability, right? So would it be if the Historical Commission came back and said, the new house needs to be no more than two stories, and it needs to be complimentary to mid-century modern in style because it, that's what the, the neighborhood is? Is that something that could be put in as requirement to the development?
So I, I think it's important to note that the topography of the site is such that the new, newly created lot is significantly lower than where the existing house is. So that, that's one issue. I think the Commission would weigh that as well as other factors. But I think it's important to, when you see the, the plot plan and the sprawling footprint of the existing house, it is entire pool wing, I believe, and it's all one level. So by gaining a little bit in height on the other lot, you're really able to reduce the footprint of that new.
I mean, I guess, I guess, you know, so my, my concern, my naive concern looking at this, is that, you know, we have a house with a smaller in footprint, you have an area that's important that all the houses look, you know, caught, you know, in contact with each other. But this thing could be higher, and we're relying on the fact that there are trees around, so it's not really easy to see. Right? That's kind of like the predicate here, and like, I, like, do you bet the neighborhood on the fact that these trees, you know, continue? And so can you give me any research at this point that when we come to that later stage, we are not going to get an albatross out of this project?
Well, height is one factor. I think a lot of the other mid-century homes surrounding 39 Fairview are, are higher, so there, there is some precedent for that. But it's, it's setback from the public view, the, like I said, the topography, the landscape are all factors that would help mitigate the potential height. So, you know, we're not sure what, what they're planning, what they might come up with, but you know, hopefully we'll be able to visualize it in that spot.
Like I said, that new house isn't before you, but if it, if it does come before you, the board will have, you'll have to go through conditional use process, and I think some reasonable conditions could be applied to that, so the board will have somewhat of a say in the form of that house, to be consistent with the historic resource.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Thank you, President Bernheim, those are my questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Courtney?
Thank you, President Bernheim. To start with, is it safe to assume that the homeowner is in favor of a Class II designation and is aware of the restrictions that's put on the property?
He is. Staff has had numerous conversations with him, he is, is aware of that. This is something that is a family legacy, is my understanding through my conversations with the, the applicant. His father contracted this house, actually worked in the design of this house. I think the owner grew up there, so I think there's a lot invested in this applicant to make sure that this house is, it has meaning.
Okay. And that doesn't quite jive with something I heard, that if we don't allow this subdivision, that the house would be torn down and some large modern thing put in its place and a bunch of trees torn down.
It's our analysis and conversations with, with the, with the applicant, that they're faced somewhat with a, and this is my understanding of it, that it's a, a family, something inherited between many siblings, they're trying to maximize the value. If you value it and you get an existing house with a smaller house, that has the same value as a new modern contemporary. It helps too, by preserving this house and giving a little extra, that extra lot, I mean, I don't want to disregard it too much, but by creating the extra lot, that makes the value difference that makes worth preservation as opposed to, if it wasn't preserved, this house itself, I believe the intent would be either by this owner or the sale of it, that it would be demolished and replaced by one of the new larger contemporary houses that are, you know, springing up through this.
And if that were to happen, you mentioned that a lot of these trees might get cut down, would, would this not fall under the requirements for replacement of any other land developed?
There would be tree replacement, but I will, the township's stormwater requirements and the township's building envelope in here would essentially ensure that a vast majority of the trees on the site would be removed. Because this is, this is a, I would say at this point, a forested site. The trees are integrated and interrelated with the root system. You start going in and digging it up, you're going to clear out the vast majority of it, it's going to be open. You can plant new trees, any of these were new trees, but that existing forested aspect.
Right. And then is, is the Class II designation required for the facade easement of this, the potential subdivision?
The Class II designation only would require, the Class II designation's a Class II designation that's before you tonight. If an applicant comes forward for relief through a conditional use process, which is what their intent is to do, in order to receive that relief, that triggers the requirement of the facades. That facade easement is almost, you have to give the township the easement first, almost at the signing of approval. So it permanently, then it permanently protects the resource.
So we would get the facade easement regardless of whether this is designated as a Class II?
No.
Okay, that's what I was understanding.
If you designate it as a Class II, it's a Class II resource. It goes, it goes on.
No, 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 sorry, sorry. When the conditional use comes up, does it matter if this is a Class II resource or not with regard to the facade easement?
Yes, because you would only, because it's a Class II resource, to take advantage of the incentive, the approval is contingent upon the applicant giving the township the facades. So the township gives a little relief in the, in the conditional use process, but in exchange for that, the applicant signs off the permanent protection of the resource to the township.
Okay, so the historic designation is required for the township to get the facade easement?
Correct.
Okay, that, that was my point of view. All right. Thank you, that's all my questions, thanks.
Anybody else have any other questions, comments? I am going to note that the property owner missed being on Zoom, missed the opportunity, so we are going to jump a little bit out of order and give him the, he's heard a lot of things and he can address it. I will reveal, I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Fox, I think Chris Leslie has explained his position, you know, fairly well, but in fairness, we'll give him that, that opportunity as well, but Vice President Gavin?
Great, thank you, President Bernheim. From the pictures, from what I've seen, it's a wonderful home, and I'm, I'm thrilled that the, the owner wants to protect this home and, and keep it, because I think it does add a lot to our township. I'm very happy that they planned for the facade easement, I think that gives us a, a strong level of protection. However, my, my issue's a bigger, kind of a macro issue, not specific to this home specifically. And it's with Class II, and, and as everyone on this board has heard from me over the past months and months, I've been very dissatisfied with our ordinance on Class II. I think it's great that it gets us some more historical protection, but what our Class II ordinance does, it doesn't give us, in my mind, enough protection that's commensurate with the, the benefits to the homeowner. And I think, I think we need to really look at our historic ordinance and kind of go to the next step, because I think, I think we've gotten part of the way there, and I think now is the time, what we've seen in the applications recently is, we now need to go to the, to the next level with our historic protection. And, you know, if, if this were an application for Class I, I would certainly support it. If our Class II ordinance was a strong, provided stronger protection for the township, I would certainly support it. I understand about the, the facade easement, which I'm, I'm very happy about, but I cannot support a project adding a Class II resource to our inventory, because I don't believe our Class II ordinance is strong enough and, and weighs out well with the benefits. So for that reason, I, I can't support it, but it is not because of, you know, my value on this home, it's more having to do with our Class II order. Thank you.
Okay. With that, then what I'm going to do is, I'm going to permit Mr. Fox, who's here, and allow him to, you know, address, address the board. It's not going to be question and answers, so whatever you want us to know, now is your opportunity to tell them.
Okay, I thank, thank you for the time, Dan, and thank, thank you to the board. Just wanted to.
Why don't you introduce yourself, so everybody will know who you are?
My name is Red Fox. I live in Wayne, which is of course outside of the township, but I grew up in that house along with my four siblings. The house was built by my parents in the late 50s as, as her dream home. My father, Richard Fox, was a builder, and Theo Brandau was his architect. So as was noted, he had Theo really put together this house, and it was designed to be in line with, with nature and woods. There used to be a lot more trees around it, in fact, there were dents in the cover of the house where large trees used to be that had died over the years. And the house is actually still owned by my mother, who's 92. And my parents lived in the township in that house for over 70 years, and when they decided it was on the sell in their, in their late 80s, it became too much for them to have. We, all of the bids we got in were from builders who would, would have obviously taken down the house, and that's what led us to look at alternatives. The house was actually built with the view that there was a lot next door. In fact, if you look at those early plans that were showed, the layout shows a lot where we have the lot. So there's no windows on that side of the house facing that lot. And my, my father urged us to look at it as really a way of preserving the house, to look at the subdivision as a way of doing it, hence we started to work with the township on it. And so our goal is to reserve the house. It is a 67, 68 square foot, one-floor house, so it takes up a lot of square footage on the land. There's not, someone could build a very large house there now, and just on the current template. So our goal is to preserve it. It's, it's, the house was not only built with the environment, it was built with, facing south, it has concrete floors that generate solar radiation, it had double-pane windows which were custom-made in the late 50s, so there's a lot of innovations for its time. It's, it's not a house that would be built today, it's not really economical for this part, part of the states. So that's why we're here, and we really appreciate the township working with us to put together a plan that we think will both preserve the house, but put a house next door. The lot where we situated the house is at elevation lower, so we think even though it may be a two-story home or two, two-and-a-half story home, that it'll still be really not that much higher than in the current house. We've taken a lot of care to position it where you have maximum preservation for trees, which is part of that whole lot. So that's all I wanted to say, and on behalf of myself and my mother and my, my siblings, I just want to thank the township for hearing us.
All right. Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Fox. Is there anybody who has any further comment? I'm just going to add one, one if I, I may, as I indicated, of Mr. Fox a couple times, I have gone out and taken a look at the area, I think, Chris and Greg have given you a very accurate description of what's there, and that what this would be able to do to both, you know, save that house that truly is unique in that area and fits into that entire area, you know, well, using Mr. Sinai's term, it is a fabric in that community. And that I think that the plan going forward, while there's a risk that is run by Mr. Fox and his family, is what, what comes next, because there are no guarantees, but what they have in mind seems to be something that I suspect, looking in my crystal ball, we, we might, might all approve. And then one other comment to my respected colleague to my left, it's one thing to question one of our ordinances and state that maybe we ought to redo it or revisit it or revise it, but when it comes time to voting, we have to deal with the cards that exist and they're dealt, and that we have to, if we need to change, you know, Class II ordinance or Class II certification at some point, that's something that we need to consider. But that's not for us now, and I hope that you might reconsider your, your vote as a protest against the ordinance, just take a look at this one particular project, and we can visit the Class II designation at a later time. With that, unless there is anybody else who would like to make comments, we call the vote, and I believe this needs to be a roll call vote.
Did, oh, you do have a second, okay. For the adoption of ordinance 4224, Mr. Courtney?
Aye.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Gavin?
No.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. McComb?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
No.
Ms. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. Sinai?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Whalen?
No.
Mr. Zello?
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. That then brings us to the next item on our agenda, and this is for. And this is for an ordinance to amend the code of the township of Lower Marion, Chapter A164, the Civil Service Commission Rules and Regulations. Remove the requirements that applicants for sworn positions in the police department reside in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and that, and that they hold a Pennsylvania driver's license. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on August 2nd and duly advertised in the September 19th edition of the Main Line Times and Spurbit. So I will move for the adoption of ordinance 4225. And we have to discuss this, but provide the opportunity for any members of the board that wish to raise any other questions or make any comments in, in reference to this. But before we do that, thank you, Vice President Gavin, for seconding the motion. Now, we'll hit that reset, anybody with any questions or comments? See none, then we can then call the vote.
For the adoption of ordinance 4225, Mr. Courtney?
Aye.
Ms. Durbin? Mr. Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. McComb?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. Sinai?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Zello?
Aye.
Mr. Burnham?
Aye.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we actually have four different ordinances to consider regarding traffic issues. And the, the board has discussed each of them at length and has decided that procedurally, we would seek similar to a, our consent calendar of doing them all at one time. There has been a request by one of our commissioners that the ordinance relating to Booth Lane not be done in that group. We're going to leave that aside and we will come back to it. But I will then move for the adoption of ordinance 4226, 4227, and 4228, which are in reference to Cricket Avenue Parking Restrictions, which are on page 38 of our, our agenda. Cricket Avenue Two-A Traffic and Always Stop Sign, which is on page 42 of our agenda. And Montgomery Avenue Speed Regulations, which is on page 45 of, of our agenda. And I don't know if there is any.
And also.
You know what, and my, my, my error also before ordinance 4229, which is for Old Belmont Avenue Parking Restrictions, which is on page 48 on our agenda. And I, I know that Commissioner McKeon may have a, a comment in reference to that. And then I'll give anybody else opportunities to speak before we vote on those as a whole. Commissioner McKeon?
Thank you very much, President Burnham. I just had a quick question for Superintendent McGrath about the, the enforcement.
Yeah, please.
So outside, I'm very happy that this came along. Abandoned cars have been a problem, so I absolutely support this. And Superintendent McGrath, I just wanted to get a better understanding in terms of enforcement. What will the LMPD do to enforce this parking here on Old Belmont? And what can concerned residents do to make sure that violations are enforced?
Well, as this issue was brought up, during the summer, we've already increased controls there to see when we found that cars potentially could be abandoned. That's already increased. So once this ordinance goes into place, we'll be continuing the enhancement enforcement and cite those vehicles that are violating the new regulation. Then lastly, residents or businesspeople in that area should call on anything that aren't a foul, so that we can investigate it.
Great, thank, thank you very much.
Anything else? All right, so I'm going to ask Vice President Gavin if he'll amend his second, the motion to include ordinance 4229?
I will.
Okay. With, with that, for, for each of those ordinances, we need to have a roll call vote?
Yes, so for the adoption of ordinance 4226, 4227, 4228, and 4229, Mr. Courtney?
Aye.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. McComb?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. Sinai?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Zello?
Aye.
Mr. Burnham?
Aye.
The ordinances are duly adopted.
And this, this brings us to the other one, which is an ordinance, and I am going to read the whole thing. An ordinance to amend the code of township of Lower Marion, Chapter 145, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 15, Schedule Section 145-118, Schedule 18, Parking Time Limited by adding two-eight hour, two-hour, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, except Saturday and Sunday parking limitations on the west side of Booth Lane from Old Lancaster Road to Montgomery Avenue. And by rescinding the five-hour, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, except Saturday and Sunday parking limitations on both sides of Booth Circle for its entire length and replacing it with a two-hour, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, except Saturday and Sunday parking limitation. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners on August 2nd and duly advertised in the September 19th Main Line Times and Spurbit. I will move for the adoption of ordinance 4230. And thank you, Vice President Gavin, for seconding that. And I know Commissioner Kramer, you had some comments you wished to make.
We need a policy on when we're going to have restrictive parking in the township. This particular situation does not meet the criteria that I believe are appropriate, which would be safety, the need for turnover for parking for businesses, or the need for on-street parking for residents, and therefore I can't support it.
Anybody else with any other questions and or comments? Commissioner Durbin?
I agree with what Commissioner Kramer had to say. We need a policy that makes sense throughout the township. Thank you.
And anybody else wish to make any comments? Yes, Commissioner Zell?
There are times when commissioners think that township staff moves slowly on things. But in this case, township staff moves so quickly that the signs on the west side of Booth Lane permitting parking to two hours are already. So I see it most about every day when I drive by. I do agree that we do need a policy that is applicable. I, because the, the reasons for doing this, there are valid questions for it. However, I will support it in this case.
Thank you very much. Any, anybody else with any other comment in this regard? And as Commissioner Durbin, as I indicated to you before, I think your, your point regarding what you had said last time regarding a policy was well, well-stated and now brought forth again by Commissioner Kramer. So would you, something else to add to our to-do list? With that being said, we can call the vote?
For the adoption of ordinance 4230, Mr. Courtney?
Aye.
Ms. Durbin?
No.
Mr. Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Kramer?
No.
Mr. McComb?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. Sinai?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Zello?
Aye.
Mr. Burnham?
Aye.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Very good, thank you very much. That brings us to the next section of our meeting, which would be unfinished business. There is none, but there, is there any new business somebody wishes to raise? And how about any announcements? Anybody have any announcements? No one's going to say the Phillies are winning or losing. Good. All right.
Count on you for that.
There's a reason I'm not commenting. With that, then, I thank everybody for their hard, hard work this evening. And we are hereby adjourned, and at least the Eagles will beat Kansas on Sunday.
Well, they're from Missouri.